Today's citizens forum for our summer meeting. You'll have two minutes to address counsel as I call your name. Our first speaker is Bishop Sonny James. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon to all of our distinguished guests, especially to our young folks and our youth in the room. We are all accountable for our future, and that means that we have to do things differently. We have to think outside of the box. We've got to come together to make sure we understand, Mayor, that there are going to be differences amongst all of us. But the last time I checked, the Bible said, "Let him without sin be the first, cast the first stone." As we navigate through these difficult times, I'm going to challenge each and every one of us. Recently, we hosted a community meeting where some of you who are here with us now raised your right hand and said, "If it's going to be, it's up to me." And I want to encourage all of us today to take on that same posture. It's not always going to be pretty, but we only can count on one another. In this recent incident that happened, my encouragement is let us find out more details about each other as people, that when we do speak out, we know the true essence of who and what we're talking about. When I was a young man growing up, the saying was, well, I better not say all them sayings, I'm the bishop now, but don't start none and won't be none. And we are a community, folks. We have to set the precedent. I came to say something different.
Thank you. Bill Bresser, welcome. We have quite a few speakers today, so I'm going to call you up three at a time. Bill, please come to the dais. Howard Vaughn, I believe, please come up, and Eddie Hawkins, please come up. Mr. Bresser, you have the podium.
Yes, thank you. Yes, my name is Bill Bresser. I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs. And I'm just here to say, you know, the gun violence issue is complex, as you know, with many different causes and potential remedies. I know the city's trying to remedy the problem, recognizing all the contributing factors, and you're approaching solutions to the issue in various ways, and one of those solutions is supporting Boys and Girls Clubs. Boys and Girls Clubs, of course, prevent kids from ever entering these situations where they're involved in gun violence. There are no statistics on that, but we know it works. We are uniquely suited to address this issue because we're open Monday through Friday, every night after school. We're open all summer to bridge the gap between school years. We serve 2,500 boys and girls annually, ages five to 18. It's a youth development program, so we offer homework help, mentoring, service learning, gaming, sports, daily meals, and we're building a youth workforce development program across all of our sites. Youth workforce programming will find teens their first jobs, introduce them to trades, the military, universities, all the options for life after high school, and everything we do is free of charge, partially because of your support. I don't know of any other youth service agency that does that. The best way to curb gun violence is to prevent kids from ever entering these situations and supporting agencies who have the capacity to serve so many youth and who open their doors every night after school and all summer. What the city helped us do at Roll Hill saves lives. What you're helping us do with your human services funding will save lives. So I just wanted to say we're proud of Boys and Girls Clubs to partner with the city. I thank you very much. We want to expand that partnership, and thank you for providing places for kids to grow and thrive every night.
Thank you. Elise Bowen, please come to the dais. Eddie Hawkins, if you're here, please come to the dais. Howard, you're next.
As I stand here in front of all of you dignitarians, it's an honor to be here with y'all, but I'm part of y'all. I worked in the person department for 16 years, and if it wasn't for City Hall, I wouldn't have been able to do what I was able to do. In other words, I come from the ghetto, didn't have anything. I started working down at City Hall, I was 18 years old, right out of high school. First thing they asked me, they said, "Do you have a record?" I said, "No, sir," and I got a job down there, Grand Master Scott, in our karate organization. Everybody know me, all of y'all know me. And I'd like to thank Constable Jeffrey and his aide, he's been here trying to help me to get my social security. I'm not getting my social security, I'm not even getting even my money from down here at City Hall. I worked down here 16 years. They told me I never worked here. What? Tim Blackwell? You look at all them pictures there. I had buildings and everything, the Community Action Agency building I had, and I want to thank the Boys Club here because I got a grant there and Tim Blackwell here. And it's just that we got serious problems when a six-year-old shoot the schoolteacher in the head. I never heard anything like that. And I know you helped my cousin, Mayor, Mayor, uh, Abthap, and also Mika Wong, she in karate with me, and we talked, and she know what karate did for her. And we got all this money and everybody running off with all the money. I mean, come on, you're not giving the money to the right people, but we got to come with solutions. Everybody's saying the mayor's bad, the councilman's bad, the police chief's bad. Well, who come with solutions? I have solutions. Which one would you give the money to? I got that building right there, and they selling up for two on living. All of y'all know I had it, Tim Blackwell telling me the phone, and they didn't.
As you finish speaking, if you could exit the dais to make room for the next speakers. Who should be at the dais right now is Eddie Hawkins, Elise Bowen, and I'm now calling Latoya Turner to please come to the dais. Mr. Hawkins, welcome.
Hello there. My name is Latoya Turner.
I'm sorry, Latoya, one second, I apologize. We go one at a time, and so Eddie Hawkins was signed up first, and then Latoya, you're third. Sorry about that. Mr. Hawkins.
So we're all together, so we're here with Brownhand Literacy.
Could you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So we're all here together, we're here on behalf of just our appreciation for receiving the Boots on the Ground grant. We're doing a project in South Avondale, South Avondale Middle School now. We have the opportunity to work with the seventh and eighth grade students in South Avondale. We're going to be turning the playground space behind the school into a HBCU literacy lab. We'll also be recreating a HBCU. You can't hear me? We're also going to be creating an HBCU literacy walkway in front of South Avondale School, where we'll have an opportunity to work with the young people on literacy. As you know, literacy is something that you can't take away from a young person, so it's our goal to continue to work with the young people in Avondale to build a foundation. If everyone in here knows, there's only two things I love more than my family, and that's Avondale and Woodward High School, so it's my opportunity to give back, so I'm going to turn it over to my partner in crime, Latoya.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
So yes, my name is Latoya Turner.
One second, I'm sorry, guys. It's hard for us to do a group presentation, so we, to be fair to everyone, everyone gets two minutes. So when Mr. Hawkins is finished, is that correct?
I'm done.
Okay, so clerk, if we could start the time, Madam Clerk? Sorry, if we could start the time over. Now, Latoya, you may begin. I just want to make sure you get your full two minutes. Go ahead.
Hello there. My name is Latoya Turner, and I am the founder of Brownhand's Literacy, which is an organization to educate kids about HBCUs at a young age. We partner with No Excuse College Tour, which have the same mission to expose more students in Cincinnati to historically black colleges and universities. We know that there are two here in the state of Ohio, which is Central State University, and Webber Forest University, which I'm a proud graduate of, Central State University. We receive the Keep Cincinnati Beautiful grant, which we received the largest grant from the city of Cincinnati and Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. So we are very grateful for the project that we'll be doing, which is the HBCU Literacy Hub at South Avondale Middle School, where we are exposing kids to HBCUs. We are transforming the outdoor space, almost like a HBCU yard, almost like a HBCU campus where students are able to take, teachers are able to take the students outdoors, and it'll expose them to literacy, HBCU awareness, and to give them an outlet and a place for them to, one, see themselves, to grow, and close the literacy gap. So really, this was appreciation for the grant that we received, and then we also would love to see more work being done exposing our students here in Cincinnati around historically black colleges and universities, because as we know, they produce 50% of black teachers and lawyers and doctors, and the percentage is really high. So this was a appreciation for the work that's being done in the community with, and then also with partner organizations. So it wasn't just a Brownhand's Literacy. We decided to come together and unite as one to get the mission done, which is exposing kids to HBCUs and literacy. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Elise, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elise Bowen with No Excuses College Tours and Programs, and I am the program manager. So as the other two have just said, we do want to extend our gratitude and appreciation for receiving the grant. This is a powerful collaboration, and we're honored to receive the highest grant from Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. We're putting together this collaboration to bring unity, education, literacy, and college exposure to the students that will be entering those doors on August the 20th, 2025. We have a cleanup day scheduled for August the 14th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and we encourage city council members, city members, to come and be a part of this groundbreaking experience. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you very much. Our next three speakers, Michelle Tony, Justin Scott, Dr. Ross Turpo. And as a reminder, when you're finished speaking, if you could vacate to allow room for the next speaker. Michelle, welcome.
Hello, my name is Michelle Tony. I'm the Executive Director of Families For and Vice President of School Age Services at Learning Grove, where we envision a world where all children and youth, regardless of their background, reach their full potential and their families can thrive. Learning Grove is the region's go-to partner for bridging education and workforce. We're grateful for the support from the city of Cincinnati, which is making a significant difference for the families we serve. With funding dedicated to youth gun violence prevention, we're enhancing our after-school programs by keeping students in a safe, fun, engaging environment during the critical afternoon hours, providing opportunities to explore their interests and excel in school and keep them off the streets. According to Mental Health America, 45% of youth are not hopeful about their future, and a Gallup poll shows that 66% of the youth do not know their career path to choose. Navgo at Withrow University High School provides a comprehensive, student-centered, college and career readiness service designed to break down systemic barriers and connect youth to meaningful careers. This collaboration offers our students valuable opportunities for career exploration. With the city's support, Learning Grove fosters hope and equips youth to future, for their future. We're committed to the professional development of early childhood educators across Cincinnati. This investment in our educators is vital for fostering and nurturing effective learning. On behalf of Learning Grove's 300 staff, serving 6,500 children, youth, and families, I extend my heartfelt thank you to the city of Cincinnati for your support through the Human Services Fund.
Thank you so much. If Jimmy Lake could please come to the dais. Ma'am, you may exit. Thank you. Justin Scott, welcome.
Hello. I live at Kirby Apartments, 5469 Kirby Avenue, and getting ready today, I actually fell out of the shower, and my bathroom is now destroyed, and there is no one to fix it because the court has assigned an absentee slumlord as a receiver in Prodigy Apartments, who has refused to do any maintenance since April, and they have kept that promise. We have holes in the walls in people's apartments, in our laundry rooms. We have areas where our parking lot is literally caving in on itself. We also have sewage pumping into the first floor of the building that I live in that's so bad that it literally has standing urine and feces. The smell is nauseating, and it even wafts up onto the fourth floor into my apartment with the door closed. As far as we know, black mold is forming, and if that gets into the HVAC system, we are in danger. And the problem is, you guys have done nothing. You've OK'd funds, but no one's actually fixing anything. And the problem is, is that Democrats got creamed nationwide last year because people are sick and tired of Democrats putting procedure and process over people. We need people to fix our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Cam Lane, please come to the dais. Sir, if you could exit, please. Justin Scott, if you could exit, please. Thank you. Cam Lane, if you could please come to the dais. Welcome, doctor.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dr. Ross Turpo, and I am the Vice President and Chief Impact Officer at Cincinnati Works. On behalf of our team, I want to thank the city of Cincinnati for your investment in our young people and their futures through our Next Generation Workforce Development Program. Over the past year, we've provided career awareness sessions to over 376 students, enrolled 308 in our intensive Next Generation Program. These young people, many from historically marginalized communities, are exploring pathways to high-demand industries like construction, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, aviation, and supply chain, where wages are starting on average of about $1,850. The Next Generation Program offers more than just career exploration. It provides wraparound supports that to help our youth, their families, their communities to thrive with our job readiness training, our 101 career and financial coaching, our connections to technical institutions, and our access to employer partners who believe in long-term support, career advancement, and second chances. Thank you for your support, for standing with us to give these young people exactly what they need, which is most of all, opportunity, support, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. If we could have Deborah Williams, please come to the dais. Welcome, Jimmy Lake.
Good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Lake. I'm the Chief Program Officer for Cincinnati Youth Collaborative. Cincinnati Youth Collaborative's mission is to empower young people to overcome barriers, to excel in education, career, and life. CYC is grateful to be a longstanding partner with the city of Cincinnati to serve approximately 5,000 young people in the greater Cincinnati area each year through college access, career readiness, and mentorship programs. One of our key programs is Saturday Hoops, where we provide a safe place for hundreds of young people almost every Saturday in partnership with positive adult role models from groups all around the city like Brothers Inc. Because we know collaboration is key, in our hoops location in the West End, Wenton Terrace, Avondale, and recently Roseline, hoops focuses on teaching our young participants four powerful themes: cheerful givers, hard workers, overcomers, and good stewards. Our most recent partnership with the city includes funding for our mentoring pathways to success work, which includes hoops in our career exploration work. Because of our partners, we are making an impact in Cincinnati. Our most recent survey has shown that 97.1% of program participants have more hope for the future. A statistic that research has proven gives these students a greater likelihood of a most successful future, and we thank the city for helping us to make this happen.
Thank you, sir. Emily D'Amelio, if you could please come to the dais. Cam Lane, welcome.
Saturday Hoops thanks you for the support. We are under CYC, so we yield back our time. Thank you.
Thank you. If Kelly Gray could please come to the dais, welcome Deborah Williams.
My name is DeBora Williams, and I'm here to express my extreme discontent with the city of Cincinnati leaders, with the brawl that went on downtown. I'm ashamed of you all who are calling the black people that were in the brawl thugs, but you have a white man who started the racism, spurring racial slurs and slapping a black man, and he still has not been charged. I am ashamed of you all. I'm 69 years old, I've lived in this city all my life, and this is a racist city, and it is, it's in every fabric of this city: residential, the police department, and you, Mayor, you were one of the ones who called them thugs. Shame on you. Shame on you.
I did, I did not. That never happens.
I was raised in the city of Cincinnati, 69 years. I attended Xavier University and graduated. I've ran a business in this city, and I know there is much racism in this city, and not a dime should be spent in this city by black people until you get it together. The last time I was here was in 2001 to protest the murder of Timothy Thomas. We stood on tables, we marched in the streets, and we got the collaborative agreement because we sued you, and you need to be sued again.
Thank you, DeBora. There has been a lot of misinformation and untruths around the awful fight that occurred two weekends ago. I want to make it very clear that no one on this dais, and I specifically, have never referred to any of the victims or perpetrators of violence during that brawl as thugs. That is just completely and totally untrue. This is absolutely a challenging time, where there's a lot of political and racial challenges, and it's a time where Cincinnati, who has experience and lived history for these challenging times, to come together, to reach for our shared humanity, and to show the world that Cincinnati is resilient, that we lead with racial justice, and that justice will be served. Our next speaker is Emily D'Amelio, Lena Zarub. If you could please come to the dais.
My name is Emily, and I'm a member of the Cincinnati Tenants Union, and I am also a union representative for the Kirby Avenue Apartments in the Prodigy Properties Receivership, formerly Vision and Beyond Building. These properties were recently declared a public nuisance in the court case, which has allowed city funds to be used at the property. We thank you for the temporary sewer pump solution. This has made it so there isn't raw sewage flowing into tenants' apartments on the bottom floor any longer. However, there are still many issues that are a health and safety nightmare, and we, as a union, are asking for more monetary support from the city. Prodigy refuses to cut the grass, and children have nowhere else to play but within grass that is up to my knees. Air conditioning is not working in many units. Because of the sewage issues, there is rampant mold and fungus growing on the bottom floor, which has caused children to become ill, and there is a stench that lingers up to other apartments. People who do not live at the Kirby property are using it as a dumping ground for large garbage items, so the people who call Kirby their home are forced to live in what is starting to look like an abandoned and neglected property because no funding is going into the apartments. Prodigy refuses to use rents collected to even fix toilets. I assume Prodigy was selected as a receiver for the building because they are in good standing with the city as a respectable and trustworthy company. We have not seen this to be true. They do not treat the tenants with any kind of respect or dignity. If they have the ability to collect rents and evict people, then they have a duty to create a safe, living condition for all tenants. The city needs to step in to provide funds, since the court-appointed Prodigy is not holding up their end of the deal, even though they will sell all of these buildings within a year and turn a huge profit. We need your support, and I look forward to discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Nordman, please come to the dais. Welcome, Kelly.
Good afternoon, city council members. Today, I want to talk about local foster care failures. My name is Kelly Gray, and I am not only a resident of Cincinnati and a proud HBCU alum of Florida A&amp;M, I'm a mother, a former journalist, and I am currently a media relations professional with over 30 years' experience working with editorial contacts to produce timely news stories. Today, I am here as a parent to speak about the ongoing violations of my son's Grayson's rights while in Hamilton County Job and Family Services custody since November 15th, 2024, after we relocated from Beaufort, Georgia. In eight months, I have only had three supervised visits with my son. Federal law, specifically Title 42, U.S. Code 675, Section 5(c), and Ohio Administrative Code 5101, 4295, are laws that require agencies to ensure regular, meaningful visitation between children and foster care and their parents, yet our visits are routinely missed or delayed due to negligence by staff at the Amazing Grace group home, which is an unlicensed placement where my son is currently housed. Even staff at the Family Nurturing Center, the agency supervising these visits, reports this pattern of missed and late visits from this specific group home. This is not an isolated issue. Grayson has been placed in multiple facilities, including a homeless shelter downtown, with no continuity of care, transportation to school, and visits are unreliable. There were multiple excused absences weekly during the previous school year. I have no confirmation of where he will attend school this far, and in just weeks, his middle schools remain unpaid, blocking transcripts. He has no access to extracurricular activities or normal experiences. Okay, so today, this is about the child and failures, today this is about one child, but these failures affect every child in our county's care. I ask for your oversight and urgent intervention.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Everyone gets two minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Paul Beam, please come to the dais. Welcome, Lena.
You've had your break, Palestinians haven't. While you rested, we buried our children. What's happening in Gaza, in the West Bank, in all of Palestine is genocide, and you know it. You've seen the images, you've heard the numbers, you've watched children be massacred, and you've done nothing. I just made it back from Palestine. It took me over 15 hours with no food, no water, to cross a border that should take three. We sat for five hours at a checkpoint in 110-degree heat while Israeli soldiers and settlers played games with our lives. You don't know what that's like. You never will. I watched settlers steal our land with my own eyes. All they need is a tent or a Star of David, and the IDF shows up to protect them. Just like that, it becomes theirs, and we, we are told not to go near it, not to look, not to breathe too loud. Afthab, this is what you support. These are the people you stand with. Before I left, I said goodbye to loved ones here, not knowing if I'd make it back. I said goodbye to my family in Palestine, not knowing if I, if it would be the last time. I left them in the hell Israel created. This is our reality. We fight just to exist, because if we die, we become a number, a headline if we're lucky, a statistic. Anna Albi Walsh, you voted to erase our truth. You changed the word occupation to plight because a Zionist told you to. Do you think that makes it less real? Mark Jeffries, language cannot cover the war crimes. What must be recognized is the genocide committed by Israel. What must be named is ethnic cleansing, daily humiliation, starvation, and apartheid. You should be ashamed to sit in those seats, ashamed to call yourselves zeters. You had a chance to stand with justice. Instead, you chose the comfort of the colonizers. So be proud, be proud that when history asked you where you stood, you answered with the oppressor. Be proud not just for watching a genocide, but for funding it. We demand divestment from every Israeli company, every weapons manufacturer, every corporation profiting of the killing of my people.
Thank you.
Palestine will be free from the river.
Paul Beam is next. Brad Horn, if you could please come to the dais, and Stefan, oh, just Brad Horn. Welcome, Paul Beam.
I don't know how many times I've been down here. Now, like I said, this program you got in the back that I gave you, see what I mean? The world needs to be monitored now. This New Life program is back there. I gave it to you three years ago, remember? Or was it two and a half? But this program comes where everybody got to be monitored now, and it will help save lives. Your cameras, your drones, that's dead, but everyday camera? Even if our power go out, we got solar. See, that's where New Life come in. You say it costs too much money. How much do a life cry cost when people crying every night? Every night? You, look, this program bring life where your grandma could walk down the damn street 3 o'clock in the morning, okay? It's been back there for a while, and it will help. But, but you know what? You stealing parts off of it. You put your drones up, that's where you got this from. You put your solar looking. You put your solar looking at license plates, that's where you got that from. So you need help, and this program will help. Not just here, it can start here, but it's a travel, it goes all over the world. You seen it. You say it costs too much money. How much do life cost? We hear cries every night, especially in our neighborhoods. You sleep peaceful at night. You don't hear the cries. So do your math. It's time to monitor the world, starting with New Life. Open your eyes and see where you sleep peaceful. Everybody else don't.
Thank you. Stefan Pryor, if you could please come to the dais. Mr. Nordman, I inadvertently skipped you. You're next.
Are you happy to do nothing while we pay for this? We are watching what remains of a population trapped behind walls, bombed, shot, and starved every single day. We are seeing their murders livestreamed to us, moments removed from their final breaths. There has never been anything like this, witnessing thousands of last words pleading for the world to care enough to act, thousands of parents pleading for their murdered children to come back to them, more than ninety percent of a population displaced, forced on death marches along their destroyed cities, neighborhood, schools, homes, and hospitals, hospitals obliterated, overrun, hospitals blown to pieces like the people inside them. They're being baited and murdered at our phony aid sites. These people need what we all need. What this genocide needs to continue is your silence. The only way this stops is if enough of us take action and demand it. The Trump administration has made it clear it cares more about funding this genocide than helping Americans in need. Is that the side you want to stand on? How can you think of yourselves as leaders and politicians of the future if you can't even meet the challenges of the present? This fight against fascism doesn't get easier while you sit back and watch. Watch while our tax dollars fund concentration camps in Palestine, while our people are sent to concentration camps in El Salvador, while we build new concentration camps here on our soil. If you want to help people in our community like Ayman Soleimani, you should speak out against the forces that took him, that targeted him. You could have listened to him while he was in this very room, sitting alongside us, demanding an end to this genocide. We should be divesting not only from Israel, but all companies complicit in their illegal actions, demanding an arms embargo, demanding all aid is left through. Our remaining humanity is entwined with the people of Palestine. How long will you watch them both be blown apart? You think you care about racial justice? How do you when you're compliant in genocide?
Thank you. Thank you. Randy Pollens, if you could please come to the dais. Welcome, Brad.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Brad Hearn. I'm with the Cincinnati Tenants Union, the organization for the majority of Cincinnati's population who rents. I have the pleasure of serving as a union rep for many of the properties in the Prodigy Receivership, formerly Vision &amp; Beyond, including Kirby. We have multiple tenants, union members here today to speak about the ongoing health and safety issues at the building. Look, our union is requesting a plan negotiated with the union, with the tenants directly, to immediately resolve the health and safety issues per the public nuisance. We know the city has allocated four hundred thousand already, but these tenants are working people, elders, kids, who contribute on a daily basis to this city, and they are union members, and they deserve safe and habitable living conditions, and to be treated with dignity, and that hasn't been happening. So as a union, we are urging the city to return to the table, as we've been at before, and do everything in your power to ensure that these conditions are addressed urgently and promptly. I was there at the property this morning, and the representative of the receiver, who speaking with some of the tenants, said that the tenants are picking on them. And I don't know how it came to be that the city thought this was a decent company, but when tenants are asserting their rights for basic habitability and dignity, that's not picking on a company that is failing to do their end of the bargain. So our union again requests a negotiated plan, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We could please have Martasha Colvin, Natasha, I'm sorry, Natasha, please come to the dais. Welcome, Stefan.
Good afternoon, everybody in here today. This curfew can lead to feeling distrust, anxiety in teens, potential damage in the parent and child relationship. Distributory enforcement can also limit freedom and strange relationships with the police officers. So this curfew is a scam, there's pros and cons in that. It won't make sense, not at all, this curfew. You need to get rid of that. Y'all need to don't vote on that today because it's stupid. Y'all need to come in the communities yourself and see what's going on, not just walk on Main Street, Mayor. You need to walk in every community. If you concerned about violence, yeah, this blank two million dollar check they finna give to the police, y'all need to give it to these rewards to unsolve these murders that's been happening out in this community. Y'all wasting taxpayer dollars, two million dollars to do nothing. Ride bikes and walk around, that's a lie. Y'all been doing this for many years. I've been down here too long. This two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay the offenders, the shooters, to get paid, make that make sense. Put that towards the reward of these crimes or these killings out here. Seventy-five hundred dollars ain't enough. If you give them more award money, you will solve some of these killings out here. This fighting downtown, if the white guy slapped the guy, he need to get charged too. Fair is fair. And we've been asking about two months ago, Mayor Afthab, about black businesses, the Stevenson Dump Truck Company. No call, the check on that, all these contracts they getting out, these developers ain't hiring black companies. That's why you getting all this nonsense out here. It's poverty in every community. You need to be more, how can I say, y'all, more transparent to the community. Y'all not. Y'all not, and it's wrong.
Tanika Edwards, please come to the dais. Welcome, Randy.
Hello. How you doing? United States Navy veteran right here, proud of it. And the first thing before I get into this fight stuff downtown is I lived in Boston many years ago, and we have, they have a veterans shelter there that, not only for homeless, but you can get your CDL, like I did, and other training there. We need to have something like that here in Cincinnati. You know, we're only the one percent of this country serves this country. I'm proud of that, and I'm a big veteran supporter. Anyway, we need to get something, there's many vacant buildings in town that we could create shelter for. Anyway, the next thing, I don't know if she wants to address it later after I'm done, Kearney, I don't know, I heard on the radio, if this is true, it's an outrage that you want to give a thousand dollars a month to criminals to not commit crimes? That's ridiculous. You can answer that? I just heard that. And last week, you had this pastor Lynch on here, standing there saying that, where's the mugshots of the victims? Victims don't have mugshots, all right? That's ridiculous. And I agree with the lady before, the guy who punched one, that should have had a one-on-one fight, as I'm a trained martial artist and next boxer myself, yeah, but not being attacked by fifteen to twenty scumbag lowlifes, whatever. No, that part is wrong. And the other one, it's Parks, she's not here today, I guess. What she said if that's true, that they deserve the beatdown? Are you crazy? What if it was the other way around? We have a mob in this city, a city council member saying we should have a beatdown. And the mayor, you doing a propaganda walk with a Cincinnati police officer down Main Street? What a laugh that is. Let's see you just walk down without your armed police officer. Police officers should not be allowed to use this position in an ad. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, Kathy McCray-Peeks, welcome to the dais. Natasha, you're next.
You had it right, it's Martasha.
Marta-
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and community leaders. My name is Martasha Colvin, Assistant Director of Sweet Sister Splash. I'm here on behalf of our youth, our partners, and our community to talk about a project that has turned pain into purpose, the Keeping It Cool Anti-Violence Mural at Tav High School. This spring, we worked with twenty incredible Tav students who were tired of the violence in our city. Instead of staying silent, they took action. With guidance from our partners at Soul Palette, they created a mural that is more than just paint on a wall. It's a bold statement that their lives and voices matter. Yes, our city is hurting, but there's hope. Every day, young people, community leaders, and organizations like Sweet Sister Splash are on the ground doing the work. For over a decade, we've supported youth through programs like Cincinnati Young Entrepreneurs, helping them gain business skills, mentorship, and a sense of purpose. The Keeping It Cool mural is an extension of that mission. We know that when young people are seen, heard, and valued, violence decreases. Art becomes a tool for healing, leadership, and unity. Our goal is to bring murals like this to every Cincinnati public high school, but we can't do it alone. We need support through funding, partnerships, and amplification to keep these efforts going. On August fourteenth, we invite you to Tav High School from one to three P.M. for the official mural reveal. Come see what's possible when we invest in youth-led art and community healing. Thank you to the city of Cincinnati, the Keep Cincinnati Beautiful Fund, and Human Services Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Allen, please come to the dais. Welcome, Tanika.
Hello, I just want to say something to the community and before the city council. I have two videos that I want to play because I will no longer be ignored in this situation concerning Cincinnati and our community and Kentucky, for that matter. And I'm gonna just send a message from Sam Altman and another video. And I'm gonna just play it as long as I can play it.
My worst fears are that we cause significant, we, the field, the technology, the industry, cause significant harm to the world. I think that could happen in a lot of different ways. It's why we started the company. It's a big part of why I'm here today and why we've been here in the past and been able to spend some time with you. I think if this technology goes wrong, it can go quite wrong, and we want to be vocal about that. We want to work with the government to prevent that from happening, but we try to be very clear-eyed about what the downside case is and-
And I'm gonna just stop it right there. Here's the second video I would like to start.
Synthetic telepathy, voice-to-school technology. Chances are, you haven't heard of these terms, but after searching the internet, I found dozens of websites dedicated to the phenomenon and several Valley residents who say they're victims.
How much more can you invade me than to go into my brain? It sounds like somebody else is reading the book, only its thoughts.
We're not having a group hallucination. This is actually something that's happening.
These men all live in the area, didn't know each other before the voices started, and say someone is playing mind games with them.
Mostly, it's a lot of derogatory comments about whatever you're thinking about.
Only time I ever had a whole sentence, he said, "This is not about you," which just frosted me. If it's not about me, what the hell am I going through all this for?
Kevin Bond says he used to have a normal-
Thank you. Susan Lakes, please come to the dais. Welcome, Kathy.
Hello, Council members and Mr. Mayor. I'm a resident of Kirby Apartments, and we have some photos to show you all of some of the things that Brett was mentioning that's going on at our complex. This seems to be someone's bathroom. This is a dumping situation that's going on in the back. I've emailed the city, the Health Department. I have gotten no response about somebody coming out. This is what the grass looks like. They've cut the grass once. One of the people from Prodigy was there today, and I asked him, when were they gonna do something about the grass? And he told me that they weren't because there was no money at Kirby. And he said that they weren't gonna do anything at Kirby anyway because we were picking on them. And I guess he referring to us picking on them because I've been on the news on Channel Twelve. I was just interviewed today by Channel Nine, and they've come to see the things that we're dealing with. And we would love to have some of you council members to please come out and see it for yourself, because the pictures don't do it any justice. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Adrian, please come to the dais. Welcome, Joyce.
I'm a resident of Kirby's, and I've been there since two thousand and sixteen.
Joyce, could you sit closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
I am a resident of Kirby Apartments. I've been there since two thousand and sixteen, and this has been Prodigy since they got it. They take our money, and the border's gonna be cut off, we have to call somebody, lights. They say we can't do nothing, we ain't got no money, but you steady taking our rent every month. So, and then look, this what the grass look like in front. That's embarrassing. Disembarrassing. When somebody come to visit you, the halls are filthy, the smell. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you for coming in, Joyce. Gwen Summers, if you could please come to the dais. Welcome, Susan Lakes.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. I have two little bitty things today. First of all, I live in over the Rhine. I'm not paid by anybody to be here. I'm retired. Living over the Rhine, gardening over the Rhine, I want to thank whoever's ever responsible for putting the extra police presence. I can tell you they're doing their job because I almost got arrested. It's kind of a funny story. I was out doing what I do best, picking up trash along Elm Street, and I had one of those long things about rifle length, you know, out there picking up trash, and I was holding it, and a police car went by and kind of looked and did a double take, so I think they thought maybe I had a weapon of some sort. So they are doing their job. Thank you for making added police presence. I feel safe there. The other thing is about the incident that happened the weekend before last, I believe it was, in the downtown area.
Yes.
Oh, my. Oh, my. I heard the police chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, say that out of all the people there, just one person called nine-one-one. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what they said.
Can we turn that into a positive? I'm assuming that that person did the right thing. Let's not scold that person. Let's praise that person for trying to help. Let's name a street after him. Let's find him and praise him rather than shame everybody else for not calling nine-one-one. Let's turn this into a positive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Christian Helsman, please come, oh, Christian Helsman is on Zoom, so we'll be going to you in two speakers. Minister Adrian, welcome.
Oh, good morning, I mean, good afternoon, Council. So I sent everybody to email, I don't see the city manager, but I would love for y'all, we're asking for a motion for reconsideration for the zoning for the eighteen thirteen. I have sent to every single person's email of the trustee board meeting. I don't, that's the recording, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I sent for eighteen thirteen, but I sent you the recording for the OTR board meeting from June the ninth of all the board members basically disagreeing. I'm gonna send you the second recording next. I would like for y'all to pause for that if you can, because some of the residents don't agree with it, business owners and outdoor merchants. And I just want y'all to reconsider it because none of you have called me since June the second, since I first talked about this. And so if you really want to help the people in OTR, we greatly appreciate if you can reconsider that for us. Also, with that being said, I also sent a video of Kevin from the OTR board, the president, of Kelly basically placing duplicity about the amount they were raising, and Kevin was like, "I thought you didn't know." And with that, that's in violation of federal funding accountability and Ohio Revised Code twenty-nine twenty-one dot thirteen of false statements. So if you could please reconsider that, I would greatly appreciate. I understand that she recommendation of passing it, but nobody's agreeing with this. And then in the recording, Finley Market couldn't even answer how it was gonna help the community. So CFFM is not trying to help the community, and these people did not know they were raising twenty million dollars exploiting women-owned businesses and black-owned businesses. We haven't got any help. I've even told y'all about the violations of their momentum due process. None of y'all have looked in your mailbox because I've been there twice. So-
Thank you. James Walker, if you could please come to the dais. Welcome, Gwen Summers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and audience. My name is DJ Gwen Summers, and I am the baddest DJ in all the land, bar none. And I noticed some of you all- And I noticed some of you all take me as a joke, but I'm no joke. I wanted to talk about several things, the main one being that brawl that happened downtown. Why is it that only blacks have been arrested and no whites? I'm not prejudiced. I'm against violence of any kind to anyone. So the guy that slapped the black guy, he was a white guy, he should be in jail too or at least charged for assault. The other thing I wanted to say, mayor, is I'm still with you. You're doing an outstanding job. It's not your fault that people have run amok here in the great city of Cincinnati, which is why I wanted to run for city council. I have over 1,000 signatures, but I can't run now because I found out in March, I'm having my third and probably final grandchild. She lives in Washington, DC, and so I'll be spending a lot of time there for the next four years, I'm sure. The other thing I wanted to say is today is my mother's, would have been my mother's 94th birthday, August the 6th. She passed in '09, and in her honor, I'm having a cookout, a community-wide cookout in Eden Park this Saturday from 3:00 p.m. to dusk. Everyone is invited. I've invited you all to several different functions that I've had. No one's come, but that's okay because I'm gonna keep having it. I'm gonna keep doing it. And the Peace, Love, Harmony Music Concert for up-and-coming artists is still on, and I'm planning that for December. Location is to be determined. I thank you all so very much for your time. Have a wonderful afternoon, and I love you.
Thank you. Kelly Roberts, if you could please come to the dais, as well as Jania Roberts. We're now gonna move to Zoom. Christian, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead, Christian.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Christian Helsman. I lead the nonprofit Springinger Steps. I want to express some dismay. Recently, Planning Commission recommended the vacation of E-Valley and Bowman Street in the West End. These corridors will be used for trailer staging directly and adversely impacting residents across from Finley Street. That experience today is not favorable, but the proposed use is not a market improvement. Industrial storage continues to creep closer to Lynn Street. If you look at other blocks north and south, the buffer from industry extends from Lynn Street about a half a block. Long-term trailer storage will have a detrimental effect on quality of life, chemistry, and circulation, redevelopment at a neighborhood scale. I'm gonna speak off script for the rest of my time. I have alerted Councilman Jeffries, DOTE, Real Estate Division, about the growing number of gated alleys, both leased as well as sold. And I'm alarmed by the sheer number of these public spaces that are being taken away from us without very much engagement at all. So in this case of the West End, I would love for council to oppose such a vacation for industrial use, but I'd also like to see a more comprehensive look at what we're losing and what we will never get back. This is something that really needs to be studied, the position that the property owner has to lease these alleys and then close them indefinitely, or even the erasure and vacation of these public spaces. I'd really like to see them as assets. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James Walker, welcome.
Good afternoon. I am here to, is that, I'm too close to the mic or? I'm here to speak about what is being called the brawl or the Cincinnati brawl. So in my opinion, this is about, or that incident is about violence and threats. Some violence is physical, but threats can also be violent. So in my opinion, not all violence is physical. This is the case of that. The white suspects, pay attention to that word, suspects. The white suspects are the party that used verbal violence and furthered it with physical violence. America has always sought to teach black people a lesson or their place, air quotes. In this instance, the white suspects need to be taught a lesson. More so, everyone involved needs to be equally taught a lesson, charged equally, or no one should be taught a lesson, specifically because this is a stand-your-ground state, so the black victims definitely had no duty to retreat. None of the white suspects have been charged, except for, I think, one with the misdemeanor one, the guy who threw the slap. So maybe he has been charged, but we don't know. They won't release his name. And none of them, none of their identities have been released to the public, as have the black victims. This is purposefully steered media. There's a malicious reason for this media manipulation. Police officers answer to the police chief, who is assigned by you, Mr. Purval. So the mayor and this council is willfully letting investigating detectives and the police chief run a one-sided investigation and a process of charging those involved. Victoria Parks, I agree with her remarks. Why? Because I identify with her as a black person from a purely black American experience that is different from a white experience. You can truly, fully understand her remarks from a purely black experience only.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Simone Bess, please come to the dais. Sir, if you could exit, please. Thank you. Kelly, you are next.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Roberts. I want to say, Mayor F. Tab, you do a wonderful job. I've seen you. I've seen Victoria. I think that's her name. She's done a wonderful job for our city. I'm here, I advocate for my daughter. Her name's Shania. She's eight months pregnant. She lives in Rohe Hills that used to be called the Fay. She's been here for five years, witnessing children being shot and killed on the corner of President Nottingham. This government-funded HUD program helps this apartment complex. We have here multiple gunshots in her house. She has three babies under the age five. She's feared of her children getting shot and killed. So she's with me. I'm homeless. I'm in a hotel. So there's seven of us in this hotel room. We stick together. It is very hard. I, you know, I do my best. It's very, it's a, it's a struggle. We have all these pictures of gunshots. We would like to show the news, all these gunshots. We talked to Marquita, the, what's her, who is the, Ms. Perez? Marquita is over the apartments. We've called Wallach Properties. We went to CMHA, and that man named Nicole does not care. He's happy to give us bad news. He wants us to go get a shelter, a homeless certificate. When we've done all that, we've been to shelters. Shelters is full. So I'm just hoping that she gets help. She's due to have a baby.
Thank you. Shania?
Yes, my name is Shania Roberts. This is my mother. I just want to say I even reported the issue many, many times. I've reported it to the villages of Rohe Hill with two requests. I even reported the people that causes the gun violence right across the street from me, and nothing was done about it. They use the side of my house as like a shield and shoot at each other. I have to literally come up with like a routine with my three babies. I have a five-year-old, I have a two-year-old, and I have a four-year-old. I have to come up with a routine for them to run to the steps just so they don't get shot through the walls. I've seen babies right on the side of the window that got shot, and I really don't want that to be my, my kids at all. It's been multiple, over the past two years, it's been about five kids that got shot.
You're only halfway. You can keep going, please.
I've also reported water damage. They've done nothing about the water damage. Every time I make a request for something to be done, nothing is never done, which is a safety hazard as well because that can cause mold growing in my house, the ceilings, the ceilings are practically caving in. I've called shelters in Kentucky. I've called shelters in Baltimore, Butler County, I'm sorry. And Butler County says that you have to be a resident to even get into a shelter. So it's like I'm out, I'm all out of luck. And that's all I want to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Shania. Noah Nixon is here from my office. We haven't worked on this issue before, so we'd be glad to share information and be an advocate for you. Thank you so much for sharing your story. Simone, you're our final speaker.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Simone Bess. I've been a resident of the city since 1989. I've a degree, I'm a degreed engineer and educator. I have raised three children in this city, and I continue to be an active community member. For the last nine summers, I've created and run a STEM camp for kindergarten through eighth-grade students. This past year, it was supported by the Boots on the Ground grant, and I want to thank the city and all of the members of council for that support. This is my passion. This I can do. Our camp creates space for our children to learn and understand STEM, to think creatively, to solve problems, and to be, more freely be themselves and to understand their full potential. This summer, they learned about and created products about their melanated skin, their carbon footprints, 3D printing, and artificial intelligence, eating healthy, and being physically active. Our city needs to invest more in our children and our youth. This is what we need more of. Programs can't fix disrespectful people who don't know how to keep their hands to themselves. Programs don't fix that. But programs that you've heard about today can. Cities across this nation have begun to find solutions to decrease in violence and improving the lives of children. They're doing and figuring out strategically how to combine their dollars to make more sense that they're strategically looking at the data and using programming for our children to decrease violence and ultimately make the life of our children.
Thank you, Simone. It's now 2:35. That concludes this portion of the citizens' forum, and we will immediately begin the business portion of Cincinnati City Council. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Nolan?
Here.
Councilmember Owens?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Councilmember Albie?
Here.
Actually, we're gonna take a two-minute recess, and we'll be right back for the rest of the business portion of council. Thank you. Please take your seats. If we could, please take our seats. That would be great. Students, thank you all so much for spending time with us. Thank you so much, Christian. Appreciate it. We're back in session. Having called the roll, we will now please stand for a moment of silence. And now the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting will be approved and filed without objection. Hearing none, they'll be approved and filed. Councilmember Parks will be excused from today's session. I really appreciate council members coming back for our summer meeting and also coming back for our special public safety-focused meeting. It has been, no doubt, a challenging time in the city, but I want to reiterate that the city, every summer, has a safety plan, and every summer, we monitor that plan week to week. We take public safety very seriously. It is our top priority, not just in our values, but also in our city's budget, spending overwhelmingly, and increasing that funding for public safety all four years that this council has been impaneled. Our summer safety program started on May 14th when we announced our summer safe, at our summer safety press conference, which is what we do every year to discuss our plans to combat the trend of rising crime during the summer months. CDRT and SWAT, investments in police overtime for visibility throughout our entire city, but particularly in our urban core. On June 24th, we proactively convened our city manager, our police chief, and myself for a public discussion of concerning crime trends that began as the summer started. We surged police presence in hotspots. We empaneled a lateral police class and rolled out our drone program. On July 9th, we once again walked through updates on our crime trends as part of our commitment to bi-weekly public updates to answer any and all questions. And at that announcement, we rolled out our Street Crimes Task Force because our residents and our community members are concerned about the drug use and the drug dealing. They're concerned about the car break-ins, and we acted quickly and effectively. On July 22nd, we held yet another safety press conference, announcing new directed walking patrols in our urban core to provide on-the-ground connections between officers and residents. We also, early in the summer, made the difficult decision to limit our red bike and scooter usage because they were used by teens to go into parking garages and break into several cars very quickly and then exit very quickly. On July 23rd, I convened a special session of city council during recess to call for council votes on formal guidance to the administration on, number one, enforcing a curfew, supporting, number two, supporting our on-ramping of the lateral class, which will increase our complement by approximately 50 experienced law enforcement professionals, and city council prioritizing and calling for increased visibility of our law enforcement in our urban core. Since that time, we have expanded our CDRT and SWAT footprint into the central business section on weekend nights. We've expanded... We've expanded on-the-ground visibility strategy on Court Street, in the Fountain District in partnership with the sheriff, and bicycle patrols from CPD in the Fountain area. And we've also coordinated with the governor, using Highway Patrol to support our, monitoring our highways, to relieve our CPD resources to be reinvested into our urban core, and also receiving Highway Patrol support for air assistance and traffic. And now today, we are voting to update and change our curfew policy. Throughout this entire summer, this administration, this council, has been very clear and intentional about the challenges that we face. We have acted quickly and proactively, and we will continue to do so. It is our mission and objective to not just have Cincinnati be safe today, but constantly, continually, through struggle and progress, to make Cincinnati safer, not just in the data, but importantly, more importantly, to make sure that every Cincinnatian feels safe everywhere in the city, but particularly in our urban core. And I want to thank our police officers, who are now walking a beat, who are now increased, increasing their visibility on bicycles and segways, who we already ask an extraordinary amount for, particularly during the summer. They have doubled down on their hours, on their commitment to the city, and we are doubling down on our commitment to having their back. Moving to our agenda. Item one is an appointment of Raquel Howard-Smith to the Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees. Roll call on confirmation of the appointment, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item number two is indicated. Item number three will be referred to the Equitable Growth and Housing Committee. Items four through 64 are as indicated. Item 65 is a motion from Councilmember Owens that the administration prepare a report by October 2025 that outlines the average time that it takes for permitting and development process of zone change applications. This is in the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Kramer-Ding, may I have Ms. Owens introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Yeah, this is just to understand in a visual kind of format what our permitting and development process looks like, and really understanding the timeline, just to create more intentionality around where we can be most efficient and responsive.
Further comments? Roll call and adoption of the motion.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 66 is a motion, excuse me, is a motion from Vice Mayor Kearney that city council pay to the Mercantile Library the sum of $10,000 from the city manager's general fund as a moral obligation for the city of Cincinnati's poet laureate program. Mr. Kramer-Ding, may I have the Vice Mayor introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So Cincinnati has had a poet laureate program for quite a few years, and we, back in 2021, partnered with the Mercantile Library to administer that program. The agreement was that we would each put in $5,000. So the Mercantile puts in $5,000, the city puts in $5,000. However, inadvertently, we have not paid for the past two years, so we now owe the Mercantile Library our share $10,000.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and adoption of the motion, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 67 through 70 are as indicated. Item 71, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the payment of $103,513 from the Emergency Communications Center ECC General Fund non-personnel as a moral obligation to Medical Priority Consultants Incorporated for training and certificates for ECC personnel provided between July 2022 and May 2025.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Today's meeting begins in Budget and Finance, per usual. Mr. Kramer-Ding, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, Mayor. Item number 71 is a moral obligation. A moral obligation is where the city has a debt for a service provided or equipment that was not pre-authorized. So often in the summer session, we have many of these moral obligations, and we will, we will have them today. This one was from our, for ECC personnel.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 72, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the payment of $243,681 from the Cincinnati Recreations Commission Municipal Golf Fund as a moral obligation to Antares Golf LLC for outstanding charges related to management services for Cincinnati Recreations Commission golf courses.
Roll call and suspension, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Parks? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Mayor, this is a moral obligation from the Cincinnati Recreation, for the Cincinnati Recreation Center. It was a result of higher-than-expected play at our municipal golf courses.
Hey, that's good news. Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 73, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the payment of $4,370 from the Cincinnati Recreations Commission Recreation Special Activities Fund as a moral obligation to Jason Barney for services rendered in connection with the boat ramp operations at the Schmidt Complex.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Moral obligation from the Cincinnati Recreation Commission for the operation of the boat ramp.
Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 74, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing a payment of $76,337.4 from the Storm Water Management Utility Storm Water Management Program as a moral obligation to Duke Energy Ohio for outstanding charges related to a stormwater electric service provided to the city from March 18, 2025 to June 19, 2025.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
This is a moral obligation from the Storm Water Management Fund for electrical services.
Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 75, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the payment of $92,000 from Emergency Communications Center 911 Cellphone Fees Fund to Medical Priority Consultants for software maintenance and support services for the period of January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025.
Roll call and suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take over for just a second. The mayor has to take care of some business. Okay, number 76. Okay, all right, number 75. Councilmember Kramer-Ding, would you like to discuss?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, citizens, play, pay your cell phones. When you pay your cell phone bill, you pay a small fee. That fee goes to support the Emergency Communications Center. This is a moral obligation from the Emergency Communications Center for software maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Okay, vote on passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
A roll call emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item number 76, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the payment of $154,798.16 from General Fund Enterprise Software and Licenseons Non-Departmental Non-Personnel to CGI Technologies and Solutions for Maintenance Services for the Cincinnati Financial System for the period of March 1, 2025 to May 31, 2025.
Okay, roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Comments from Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yeah, this is a moral obligation for the Cincinnati financial system.
Any comments? Roll call on passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
And emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item number 79, first reading, please. Did I skip one? I'm sorry. Oh, I skipped two. Wow. I'm pushing it. Okay. Item number 77, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to appropriate $1,057,209.89 of the 2024 Community Development Block Program income from the inappropriate surplus of CDBG Fund 304 to CDBG Fund Program Housing Repair Services 24 to fund the continuation of the housing repair program.
Okay, roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding, any comments?
Yeah, so now we are ending the moral obligation section, and we're moving on to grants, which is perhaps more exciting. This is, and this is exciting. This is a million-dollar appropriation for a community development block grant for housing repair, part of our commitment to making housing a priority.
Okay, roll call on passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yeah.
Roll call and emergency, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item seventy-eight, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate $69,060 in Home Investment Partnerships Program income from the inappropriate surplus of Home Investment Trust Fund 411 to Home Investment Trust Fund Strategic Housing Initiatives Program 25 to fund the continuation of the strategic home, the housing initiative program.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is another appropriation in support of housing. This one is for the Strategic Housing Initiatives, the Strategic Housing Initiatives Program. I think sometimes the acronym SHIP is used.
Other comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item seventy-nine, first reading.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate a donation of $1,000 from the Rotary Club Cincinnati to be used for operations of the Cincinnati Police Department Public Safety Cadet Program and the COPS for Cure Program.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is an acceptance of a grant from the Rotary Club for the Public Safety Cadet Program, so thank you to the Rotarians.
Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance establishing new Fund 748 Qualified Employee Benefit Arrangement Q E B A to pay excessive, excess retirement benefits that are not permitted to be paid from the Qualified Pension Trust due to Internal Revenue Code limitations.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is a relatively small change to our retirement benefits, thanks to Councilmember Johnson for his thoughtful questions in committee. This is going to affect a very small number of city employees and retirees, and they will be held harmless with this change.
Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-one, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a property sale and development agreement with American Craft Brewery, better known as Samuel Adams Cincinnati Brewery, pursuant to which the city will vacate and convey portions of the public right-of-way known as Eve Alley and Snyder Alley and all the public right-of-way known as Bowman Street to facilitate the company's construction of a truck staging area.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is a relatively small change to our retirement benefits, thanks to Councilmember Johnson for his thoughtful questions in committee. This is going to affect a very small number of city employees and retirees, and they will be held harmless with this change.
Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-one, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate a grant of up to $160,000 from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to provide resources to develop and implement an urban forestry management plan.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-two, first reading, please.
Ordinance establishing new capital improvement project EV charging rec centers PID 122816 grant to install electric vehicle charging stations at the Price Hill, Hartwell, and Madisonville Recreation Centers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, I'll defer to Councilmember Jeffries as the city's OKI representative.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, so this issue came up at OKI. It is a grant from OKI for installing EV charging systems. It's intentionally in neighborhoods where folks often don't have garages. So if you own an EV, it's easy if you have a garage, you can just drive it right into your garage and charge it. If you don't, it's more challenging. So for folks, for example, in Price Hill, Hartwell, Porchton, Madisonville, it's more challenging. So these are very strategically placed in near rec centers that enable the public who may not have a driveway to charge their EV. And so that was very intentional.
Further comments? Ms. Albee.
Yeah, really excited about this, and thank you, Councilmember Jeffries, for highlighting. I live in Madisonville, and it's true, my neighbor who has an EV drags her charger cord across her front lawn because she doesn't have a garage and a place to charge it. So making chargers more readily accessible in our neighborhoods is great. It gives people options. I also wanted to follow up, I asked Dr. Dudas more about kind of if these chargers would be free or not, and he did follow up to say that the grant covers the full cost of installation and construction, but once these locations are up or running, there'll be a fee for the chargers like you see in other places, but wanted to share that with my colleagues.
Thank you. Further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Owens.
Yeah, no, echo all the same sentiments, and again, this is, you know, the Green Cincinnati Plan moving forward and equity being at the center of that, and so this is a clear demonstration that build it and they will come. So obviously, the more accessible the infrastructure is, the more people can adopt.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call on passage of item eighty-two, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-three, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $97,430 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Fiscal Year 2023, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program administered by the Office of Criminal Justice Services to aid in reducing violent juvenile crime in Cincinnati.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-five, first reading, please.
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $6,250,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, Fiscal Year 2025, COPS Hiring Program to hire up to 50 entry-level police officers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-five, first reading, please.
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $6,250,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, Fiscal Year 2025, COPS Hiring Program to hire up to 50 entry-level police officers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $6,250,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, Fiscal Year 2025, COPS Hiring Program to hire up to 50 entry-level police officers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is another U.S. Department of Justice grant, this one's for up to $6,250,000 to hire 50 new police officers, and this would be for future classes, so it does not affect our current budget.
Further comments? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, just. Mr. Jeffries, I'm sorry, your mic is blocked by that. Go ahead. Sorry. Oh, good. No, I just, I think, just, it's important to note, this council has invested in new recruit classes every single year, and I think what we've learned is how critical it is to do it every single year, because there were some time prior to us where it was not done and it's caught up. And so I think this makes sure that going forward, we continue to leverage federal dollars in order to continue to invest in recruit classes every year.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries, for that, but actually, we probably need to do two a year to catch up with the attrition rate, and we have been almost maintaining that. I think, as you alluded to, we are seeing the result of what didn't happen years ago, and unfortunately, we are the cleanup crew in making sure that the future councils and mayors and citizens are not left short. So congratulations to my colleagues, the mayor and this administration.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-six, first reading.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $83,000 in Fiscal Year 2023 Project Safe Neighborhoods Fund from the U.S. Department of Justice and administered by the Office of Criminal Justice Services for the purchase and implementation of a deterrents and prevention-based curriculum to complement efforts to address juvenile violence crime.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-eight, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $6,250,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, Fiscal Year 2025, COPS Hiring Program to hire up to 50 entry-level police officers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item, excuse me, item eighty-five, first reading, please.
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and appropriate a grant of up to $6,250,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policy Services, COPS, Fiscal Year 2025, COPS Hiring Program to hire up to 50 entry-level police officers.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Yes. Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer Ding.
Mayor, this is another U.S. Department of Justice grant, this one's for up to $6,250,000 to hire 50 new police officers, and this would be for future classes, so it does not affect our current budget.
Further comments? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, just. Mr. Jeffries, I'm sorry, your mic is blocked by that. Go ahead. Sorry. Oh, good. No, I just, I think, just, it's important to note, this council has invested in new recruit classes every single year, and I think what we've learned is how critical it is to do it every single year, because there were some time prior to us where it was not done and it's caught up. And so I think this makes sure that going forward, we continue to leverage federal dollars
Support all these various programs we have going.
Further comments? Roll call and passage of item eighty-six, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-seven, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and appropriate a grant of up to $260,000 from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services Violence Against Women Act Grant Program to support the domestic violence law enforcement advocate project in collaboration with Women Helping Women.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Mayor, I'll defer to my colleague, Councilmember Albee.
Ms. Albee.
Great, yeah, this is a grant that supports work we do with Women Helping Women, which is an awesome organization that supports survivors of domestic violence and this as well as, you know, other partnerships with this group. So grateful to have this collaboration, to be able to serve our survivors and provide the assistance and support they need right away.
Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-eight, first reading, please.
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and appropriate a grant of up to $42,000 from the state of Ohio Office of Attorney General, State Victims Assistance Act, and the Federal Victims of Crime Act grant programs to provide funds for the Cincinnati Police Department homicide units victim advocate.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
I'll defer to my colleague, Councilmember Albee.
Ms. Albee.
Thanks, I offered to help split the load here for Councilmember Kramer-Ding. This is a grant that supports Karen Ramsey's team, the Victim Assistance Liaison Team. They are awesome social workers within Cincinnati Police that respond to crisis night or day, specifically supporting those who are survivors of gun violence. That means working with them as they work with detectives as the case unfolds, going to court, supporting them if they're witnesses and having to go through that court process, as well as hosting regular survivor support meetings and doing all of that work. So it's just really remarkable. Karen Ramsey and her team, Monica and everyone, are just awesome human beings and do so much to support our survivors. I'm eternally grateful.
Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item eighty-nine, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and appropriate a grant of up to $175,000 in fiscal year 2025 Community Policy Policing Development Micro Grant Funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, which works to recruit and retain police officer candidates between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one until they are eligible age to enter the police academy.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Mayor, this is a Department of Justice grant that will go to our police understudy program specifically. This grant will help with our pipeline of police recruits, targeting the period between eighteen and twenty-one where there's interest in becoming a recruit, but you're not eligible until the age of twenty-one.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety, first reading, please.
Ordinance establishing new capital improvement program riding and Ashman sidewalk grant to provide resources for constructing a sidewalk from mid-block Ashman Avenue to Riding Road and along a segment of Riding Road, as well as reducing the intersection width of Riding Road and Ashman Avenue as to promote pedestrian safety and connectivity.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
I'll defer to Councilmember Jeffries.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, this one and the next one, new sidewalks, that's a good thing, and new shared use path, good thing. Just making sure people are safe when they're in their neighborhoods.
Further comments? Ms. Albee.
Thank you to OKI.
Anything else? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-one, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the establishment of new capital improvement program Little Miami Scenic Trail Grant to provide resources for the extension of the existing shared use path along Beechmont Avenue from the intersection of Austin Road to the intersection of Ranchville Drive in the Mount Washington neighborhood.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
I think Councilmember Jeffries sufficiently explained this issue with his introduction.
Further comments? Roll call and passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-two, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance modifying Chapter 321 procurement and disposal of supplies, services, and construction of the Cincinnati Municipal Code by amending Sections 321-11 procurement $5,000 or less and 321-13 procurement supplies, services, and construction in excess of $5,000 but no greater than $50,000 to increase the threshold of small dollar procurement and improvement and improve the efficiency of the procurement process.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Mayor, this is a small but important change that will provide for a more efficient city government. This increases the cost cap where a department can buy something or procure an item without going through the full procurement process. It has not been updated since, I believe, 1992 and increases the threshold to $50,000.
Further comments? Ms. Albee?
I misspoke, Mayor. It increased to $15,000, excuse me, and thank you.
That was my comment. There's a typo on the agenda. It is 1-5-15,000.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-three, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance amending ordinance number 228-2012 passed by City Council on June 20th, 2012 for the purpose of reducing those special assessments levied and to be collected in 2026 related to the Oakley Station Development Project.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
This is a change in the special assessment relates to bonds issued by the Port for the Oakley Station Development.
Further comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-four, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a first amendment to tax incentive agreement with the Board of Education of the Cincinnati City School District, thereby authorizing the city of Cincinnati to approve certain real and personal property tax exemptions and credits for the maximum periods and amounts permitted under state law.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
The TIF districts obviously are an important economic development tool for the city per state law. When we enter into a TIF, we need an agreement with Cincinnati Public Schools to the extent which will reimburse them. This is an amendment to the original agreement.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Further comments on item ninety-four? Mr. Jeffries?
Just some perspective on this. In a lot of cities, literally every development that happens, they have to negotiate between the school board and what kind of abatement. And so having an agreement where it's predictable, we know exactly what it is for years, is super helpful for both sides. So I think it's very important for the city and for CPS as well.
Further comments? Yeah, I want to add my congratulations to the administration for all of their hard work on this specific item. This has been a multi-year process, and so thank you to the assistant city managers and the Law Department for all of your hard work on this item. I agree. I believe this is good for the schools and it's good for the city's economic development strategies, and this is a very big deal. So the fact that we have broad alignment on both council and the school board, I think bodes well for the future of that partnership. Thank you all, thank you to all the parties involved in this. Any final comments? Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-five, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute and implement the Labor Management Agreement between the City of Cincinnati and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Locals 190, 223, 240, 250, 1543, and 33119.
Roll call and suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Mayor, this is a collective bargaining agreement. It's a contract the city enters into with our unionized employees. These collective bargaining agreements are far and away the biggest expense of our city, so they are critically important. Police Fire, this one is with what we call, the acronym is AFSMI, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. For those that don't know, these are everything from crossing guards, the people that drive our snow trucks, to the people that remove the garbage. So they are critical to our functioning as a city government. As always, thanks to AFSMI, the representatives that were at the bargaining table. It's a lot of work. And as well, thank you to all of our city representatives that were also at the bargaining table advocating for us. So job well done.
Thank you. Further comments? Back-to-back, this is another very big deal, and I want to thank the city administration again, the assistant city managers, the legal department for the hard work. And I want to thank the leadership of AFSMI. Our AFSMI employees here in the city are extraordinarily important to us, providing basic services 24/7/365. And so thank you to the AFSMI representation for your partnership in making sure that we are prioritizing your members and our employees, both their pay, their salary, and also how much we value them. Roll call and passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call and emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-six is a motion from Councilmember Jeffries that a subcommittee of the Budget and Finance Committee be formed to evaluate candidates for the Clerk of Council. Mr. Kramer-Ding, this is in Budget and Finance, but may I have Mr. Jeffries introduce this item?
Please, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yes, we had a great discussion on Monday. As folks know, we are hiring a new clerk of council, and it's the responsibility of council to do the hiring. And so this is forming a subcommittee of Budget and Finance in order to evaluate the applicants.
Further comments? Roll call and adoption of the motion, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item ninety-seven is an amended motion from Councilmember Albee that the city administration leverage funding available through Pivot and Act for Cincy to pursue violence reduction strategies. We are now in the Public Safety and Governance Committee. Mr. Johnson, may I have Ms. Albee introduce this item?
Sir.
Ms. Albee.
Awesome, thank you so much. So as we look to provide, you know, holistic safety plan for the summer and beyond, a couple pieces to make sure we continue funding and supporting that the administration already has underway. The first one is deploying community violence intervention specialists. This is akin to what we've been doing at the transit stops. In fact, we've had really great success deploying the Collaborative Agreement Community Care Initiative Team to our transit stops over the last year and a half, two years, and they reduced, you know, crime and violence at the transit stops by 50%. So take that same lesson learned and be able to deploy those in the hotspot areas we're seeing this summer, leaving it to the administration on whether or not to work in-house or through community partners. So that's part one of this. Part two is looking at where there are hotspots, specifically around property crime, because that's been a real issue this summer, and leveraging the tenants of crime prevention through environmental design to really design place-based solutions. So more lightings, camera, whatever those kind of environmental preventions are to help make the place safer. And the last piece is really collaborating with our parking lot operators to help prevent guns being stolen out of cars. This is kind of working in two parallel paths currently. The first one is updating our licensing requirements for parking lot operators. The other one is Cincinnati Police is working on a grading system to be able to grade the safety of every parking lot garage in the downtown area so people coming in would be able to see, you know, if this is a good and safe space to park. So those are all underway. The administration's working on it. So the ask here was to be able to provide a report back within ten business days of those initiatives, understanding how it's actually getting deployed and whether or not additional funding is needed. So that's what this motion is.
Thank you, Ms. Albee. Further comments? Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, just to add on the parking lots, I think the lighting and cameras is so important. What are we trying to solve for? People are breaking into cars. So if we can increase the lighting, cameras, less likely for folks to do bad things. The other thing that I'll point out on the grading system, if you go to a lot of other cities like in New York, they have a health grading system. It's like A, B. Nobody wants to go into a restaurant that's a B. Similarly, the idea is that we grade parking lots. If you know that it's not an A or it's not top-notch, you may go elsewhere, encouraging the parking lot owner to increase security in their lot.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Mayor, please.
So I just want to clarify. So what we're, the amendment for this motion was not to act on it, but to get a report first. Is that correct?
Ms. Albee?
Yes, so it was always part of the amendment or the motion to ask for the report within ten days. So within ten days, we'll have that information back, and then that will outline the additional funding needed.
Vice Mayor.
So does that mean that this will go forward once that report is made, or we will have another chance to actually vote on this motion?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know 10 days, just for the administration and just being compassionate about what you've been swamped with. Is 10 days enough time for you to adequately respond to this, or do you need more time?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
If I could just have an answer first, Ms. Albee, if you don't mind. Ms. Long?
To the chairs, to council, I believe 10 days will be enough. If we can do it in bullet point fashion, that would be easy for us to turn over.
Mr. Johnson, did you have a follow-up?
Excuse me. I just want to make sure as we are, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on. And I just want to make sure that they've been, the administration's been given the proper amount of time to do what's necessary. We all are working diligently, but I just want to make sure they have enough time to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Albee?
I just wanted to clarify. So I spoke with ACM Brazina about this a couple of weeks ago. We talked through the report and the timing of it. So I did get his, we on the same page about it before putting this in writing and putting it forward.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
So just to clarify, this report will cut back, but we will not be in session. And so in 10 days, we won't be back in session until after Labor Day. So we won't act on this report until that time.
That is correct. Okay, further questions, comments for item 97. Seeing none? Roll call on adoption of the motion, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 98 is an amended motion from Councilmember Kramer-Ding that the city immediately utilized $2 million from the general fund contingency account to be used to expedite and expand the lateral recruit class and to fund police overtime, walking and bike patrols, tech upgrades, lighting and security cameras in the central business district and other crime hotspots. Mr. Johnson, this is your committee. May we have Mr. Kramer-Ding introduce the item? Thank you. Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Johnson. As I said yesterday, what happened at Fort Elm has been racialized and polarized, and it's been unfortunate, to say the least. But we have to acknowledge that at least a segment of our citizens feel less safe today than they did 11 days ago. So this is a first step to start addressing that. And specifically, what this does is it's moving money, $2 million, from our reserves into a public safety line item so that we know that it is there. I have talked about police visibility, which I think is critical and will be part of the conversation as we move forward. You know, I acknowledge when you say police visibility that that causes concern among a segment of the community, specifically the black community. So I want to acknowledge that. That has always been a part of the conversation, that concern, and will be part of the conversation moving forward. I've talked to the manager and Chair Johnson about the need for flexibility. This is not designed to be something that just makes us feel good, but to support the solutions in whatever that will look like. And if that's police visibility, that's great. But if there's a better solution, this motion provides that flexibility. So I think it is just a critical step to moving forward. And then to close, I want to end on what we all agree, that this council and mayor knows that the answer is always "and." The police will be part of this, but this council will continue to address the systemic causes of violence, crime, and racism.
Thank you. Further comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kramer-Ding, I salute you on the thorough, in the thorough manner you went about researching what would be best. I salute the administration and Madam Manager for listening to that also. I'm going to say it again when I said, as I said yesterday, I salute you all on this dais and the mayor, the manager, ACMs, and all the city employees that every day work diligently to make Cincinnati safe. The illusion, or just a flat-out lie that we don't live in a safe city is, that's what it is. It's a flat-out lie. This council, this mayor, and this administration have, we're not finished. We're going to keep turning over every rock. As Mr. Kramer-Ding talked about, it's an "and," and that's what we do. That's what we've done, and that's what we'll continue to do. So Cincinnatians, you are safe. This council, all of us on this dais, are working diligently to make sure you feel like you're safe. But whatever we need to do to make sure everybody feels safe, that's what we'll do. We've done it, and we'll continue to do it. So Mr. Kramer-Ding, thank you for your collaboration on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, two things. One, just to elaborate on what we've done and what we're doing here. For perspective, we've had four budgets since this council's been here. We've authorized over 400 officers, which is twice the previous four years. Twice the previous four years. We continue to invest in this. What we're doing here is seeing if we can increase the lateral class. We've already authorized 50. Can we get more? There's some challenges. Is that possible? That's what the manager's going to go evaluate. Also exploring things like downtown ambassadors. Downtown ambassadors are a great program. At a time when people are feeling not safe coming downtown, the visibility of having police officers, but also downtown ambassadors to greet them, maybe escort them to their car, make them feel safe, is an important element, too. So kudos to the administration for all their work on this, and all of our officers for continuing to focus.
Thank you. Further comments? Mr. Johnson?
Just very quickly, as the mayor knows, we were out with the vice mayor this weekend. And we saw numerous families, I mean families, not just single people hanging out, numerous families birthed both Friday and Saturday all over this city. So I think when we, the perception, perception's reality, depending on who's doing the perceiving, but my own eyes witnessed, and I did it on purpose to go out just to see. We're not talking about just singles. We're talking about families were out. There were so many people out when the Bengals practice let out, I thought it was a preseason game. That's how many people were out. So I think Cincinnati understands what we need to do to be vigilant and remain safe. But I think the message is crystal clear. People appreciate what we're doing. People appreciate our police, and people do feel safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Further comments for item 98. Seeing none? Roll call on adoption of the motion, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 99, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of Cincinnati an amendment to Section 3 of Article 5 Civil Service of the Charter of the City of Cincinnati that will create an incentive for individuals who have completed a public safety internship to pursue public safety careers with the city.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As I think the clerk nailed it, this will assist in our pipeline that we've talked about in making sure that those that are interesting, interested in careers with the Cincinnati Police Department get incentive points by going through safety academies.
Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Roll call on emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 100, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of Cincinnati an amendment to Section 1, 2, and 4 of Article 13 Campaign Finance of the Charter of the City of Cincinnati to align the city's campaign finance reporting requirements with those of the state of Ohio.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll ask Mr. Nolan. Turn over to Mr. Nolan. Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I acknowledge the quick pivot from public safety to something that is not necessarily public safety related. But I think it's important that we, as a council, address the urgent issues that face us today, but continue the work to address the inequities that exist in our system. And that is what this charter amendment attempts to do. The charter currently requires a system of campaign finance reporting that is separate and distinct from the state system. That requires two separate sets of reports to be filed. And what I have seen from past practice of other candidates, these requirements can be challenging for all candidates to meet. It is those candidates who are most well-funded or have the best network that are better positioned to address them. And other candidates who may be new to running for office struggle to address those. So this charter amendment is, has been drafted to align the city and state campaign finance reporting deadlines and periods so that they match up. It does not increase the number of filings that is due. I also believe that it enhances the transparency of these reports. Previously, the city reports and state reports with different reporting periods would be reported on alternatively and would confuse the public as to which candidates were receiving which contributions. This will make it clearer for the public to understand who is receiving which, what money from which contributors. So I want to thank the Law Department for their hard work on this, in particular Solicitor Ian Doig. I also want to thank David Whitehead with the NAACP and Triva Reed with the Urban League for collaborating with us from the early stages, and appreciate my colleagues for being open to this deep dive into the city charter.
Thank you. Further comments? Mr. Kramer-Ding?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Nolan. This is one of those things that, you know, it does require a deep dive, but is important. You know, campaign finance regulations start always with the best of intentions, but certainly in this case, and I think others, that those requirements do lead to confusion and make the process very difficult for candidates and create issues of equity and fairness.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Mayor.
You know, I just also want to add something we talked about yesterday, that simplifying this process helps candidates who might not have the structure, the infrastructure in their office, or, you know, in their lives, to do all these finance reports. I mean, it gets really difficult and sometimes expensive to actually hire people to do those reports. And so some people, I think, might be stopped from running for office because they just, I mean, this is just a lot. And so I thank Councilmember Nolan for doing this. It also helps more people get into the process of running for office, and that's something we love.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none? Roll call on passage of item 100.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
The next two items are ordinances to update and enforce a curfew policy for unaccompanied minors. This is something that earlier this summer, we in this council directed the administration to review and deliver. It is another tool for our law enforcement and partners as we work to make sure our public spaces are safe and enjoyable for all. As we discussed along the way during this process, curfews are very difficult public policy challenges. It's not just about the laws on the books. There's been, there's long been a curfew for our youth on Cincinnati's books. When it comes to enforcing those laws, it is crucial that the system we have in place is solving problems rather than creating new ones. And so I want to thank our police, our Law Department, and all of our administration employees under City Manager Long's leadership, as well as the partners who came to the table so quickly. Because in short order, you have worked to establish a robust process to help us address our challenges around youth violence and teens congregating late at night in our busiest areas without supervision from parents. I'll ask Councilmember Johnson to formally introduce each of the next two items. But the city's presentation and discussion from yesterday is also available on City Cable for those interested. Item 101, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance modifying the provisions of Chapter 911, misdemeanors of the Cincinnati Municipal Code by amending Section 911-27 curfew for minors to create a uniform citywide curfew time for all minors to better address juvenile crime and support juvenile safety in Cincinnati.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, that was a great introduction. I think you summed it up, but I think 101 addresses the fact that all minors under the age of 18 have to be in by 11 o'clock. This clears up the previous curfew ordinance that had Division 10, I think 16 and under, and then 17. It was midnight. But this makes it crystal clear that if you're under the age of 18, you need to be in by 11 o'clock. As you alluded to, this is a plus because it helps us keep young people safe. And young people are a priority to this council in this city, and we want to make sure young people are being safe. So I salute the mayor, this council, and the administration, especially law, with making this crystal clear in how we're going in this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none? Roll call on passage of item 101.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 102, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance modifying the provisions of Chapter 911, miscellaneous misdemeanors of the Cincinnati Municipal Code by ordaining new Section 911-28 Special Extended Curfew District for minors to address increased juvenile crime and support juvenile safety in the downtown area of Cincinnati.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This special extended curfew district must be free of juveniles by 9:00 p.m. If you're under 18, you have to be out of that area by 9:00 p.m. Once again, this is a plus, another tool in the tool belt to help us keep people safe in the city, especially the young people. And I think this is a, this also helps to make sure that our business district, people feel safe and comfortable going out to dinner as they did this weekend and as they'll continuously do. But this is a 9 o'clock. You have to be out of the Special Extended Curfew District by 9 o'clock if you're under 18. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Further comments? I saw Ms. Albee first, then Mr. Nolan, then Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Both this and the previous item, it's really about kids' safety, both helping prevent them from being part of any type of disorder, but also preventing them from being victims of crime themselves. And I really am grateful for this council, the administration, the mayor's full-hearted commitment to keeping kids safe and making sure that we do this in the most responsible way. I, and I know many others, had very direct, pointed, difficult questions about how we could implement a curfew while making sure that we are respecting kids' civil rights, making sure that those interactions are as positive as possible. And I'm really grateful for the hard work that this administration, the Law Department, in conjunction and coordination with our community partners at Seven Hills and Lighthouse and the juvenile courts, all the work everyone put in to make sure that we were thoughtful about every part of this process, including even before the curfew begins at 9:00, you know, going around and giving kids that heads up, whether that's leveraging our community responders or the collaborative agreement initiative team that's out there now, working hard, whatever that looks like. I think that is an important part of the process, to give kids that friendly warning before Cincinnati police begin their ask-tell-demand process. But I think overall, you know, I came in with some reservations, making sure we could enact this in the best way, best and most compassionate way possible. And I'm proud of where we landed and proud of how thoroughly the administration thought through every piece of this, answered each one of my questions, and made sure we did this in the most responsible way possible. So I'm looking forward to this being implemented and hopefully seeing the results we want. And at the end of the day, those results are making sure kids are safe and home and in a safe place each night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan?
Thank you, Chair. I am supporting this motion. I am not a fan of the 9:00 p.m. curfew, though. I'm concerned that it may be too early. I have concerns about the challenges with equitable enforcement. I think there's a chance it could deter our youth from visiting and enjoying our urban core, as I mentioned yesterday. Similar to my high school dance that was moved outside of the city because of curfews, I'm worried that schools may prefer just to avoid the risk, even if they otherwise would be permitted and end up moving their events outside of OTR and downtown. I put a lot of faith in our city's leadership with City Manager, Chief Thiege, and our Solicitor, and the work they've done to come up with these proposals. So I acknowledge that we need a reset. We need to see a change in habits and behavior downtown. And in the short term, if this is what we need to do, I am supportive. I am supportive of the 11:00 p.m. curfew that we just voted on. I agree that teens don't need to be out later than that. And I just want to echo the comments that Councilmember Johnson made yesterday. As a parent with kids, what he said really, really spoke to me. The plea to parents, these are our babies. These are God's gifts that have been given to us. And parents and guardians need to pay attention to where their kids are at 11:00 p.m. and afterwards. And if you don't know where they are, somebody should be going to look for them. And my hope is that we, as a city, as a greater Cincinnati area, it's not just folks that live in the city, but from outside the city that are coming in, too, need to pay attention, and we can all improve on this situation together.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Owens, and then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I am also supportive of both of these ordinances. One, as you mentioned, Mayor, that this is a tool, and we are being responsive to addressing safety, but also prioritizing young people in this process. And so certainly, a lot of our conversation was around, one of the critical elements as we all take responsibility in this, is really having a robust communication strategy, leveraging nonprofit organizations that are helping to support young people so that the community at large knows proactively what the expectation is. We even mentioned, you know, if the media is able to do the ticker tape at the bottom of the screen. It's also very important, that the chief highlighted, that police are trained to interact with young people, because yes, those interactions should be positive, certainly. And it's also a reminder of us to continue to leverage spaces and activate spaces for young people along the way. And so as this curfew center is also being operationalized, it's the opportunity to provide wraparound support for young people rather than things being a punitive approach. And so I can appreciate all of the work that has been done, the thoughtfulness, and certainly how we might monitor this along the way.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just to add to all of that, you know, what is good about this curfew as well is that it's not criminalizing our young people. You know, they're not going to be criminalized and charged just because they're out after curfew time, which is really important. We don't want them in the criminal justice system just for being, just for breaking curfew. And so I really like that aspect of it. The second thing is to have the social workers interact with our young people and their families to see, you know, what do you need? How about an after-school job? You know, how's your family doing? Do you need tutoring? Let's see, you know, do you need mentors? I mean, what do they need that we can help make their lives better if needed? And so I think this is an opportunity. I'd like to see our Youth-to-Work program expand year-round so that more of our young people can actually be employed. Youth-to-Work, run by our Cincinnati Rec Center, is a really good program. You know, my son was in it several years ago. It's an opportunity to, you know, not just to have a job, but to also meet the leadership of the company so that they can imagine themselves there. It's an opportunity to talk about future goals, financial literacy. It's really excellent. And so I'd like to see that program expand, and I think this is an opportunity for it. And also, you know, several council members have mentioned to actually reach the parents, because the parents or guardians have to come and pick up their children. So it's a good chance to talk to them, to see how are things going at home? You know, is there a reason your children are out this late? So I think, I think there's some good things that can come from this, and the bottom line being our children are not being criminalized.
Thank you. Further comments? Ms. Kramer-Ding?
Yeah, thanks to the administration for coming up with this solution relatively quickly. I do think it is the right solution, and I applaud them for getting us there. You know, they had to make some tough decisions, and I support that. You know, we do have two, two different zones, two different areas. That's going to cause me, you know, it's something that this council and this administration is going to have to monitor. I do think there could be issues of equity and fairness, having two different restrictions depending on where you are. And I said yesterday that I think there could be the perception that we're shifting a potential problem from the central business district into the neighborhood business districts. I did hear from some neighborhood businesses in the last 24 hours, and just want them to know they're heard, and we will continue to monitor that. I don't think that's going to be a problem, but if it is, we will act accordingly.
Further comments? Seeing none? Roll call on passage of item 102.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 103, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance modifying the provisions of Chapter 307 Classified Compensation Schedule of the Cincinnati Municipal Code by ordaining new Section 693 of Division 1 to establish the classification title and salary range schedule for the new employment classification of private parking lot inspector.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer, excuse me, Mr. Johnson?
I believe the clerk nailed it, Mayor.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call on passage?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 104, first reading, please.
Emergency ordinance declaring that Golson Avenue at Redding Road in the Avondale Neighborhood shall hereby receive the honorary secondary name of Patricia Milton Way in honor of Patricia Milton and in recognition of her countless hours of diligent volunteer service in the Avondale Neighborhood.
Roll call on suspension?
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
We are now in the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So the Avondale Community Council is really thankful to the work that their former president, Patricia Milton, did in terms of bringing economic development to the neighborhood. They would like to have the honorary street naming of Golson Avenue, which is right next to the Avondale Business Building. They would like to have that named after her. The president of the Avondale Community Council, Sandra Jones Mitchell, spoke about it yesterday in Healthy Neighborhoods. And so this is to, this is an ordinance to have that street naming done. We'll make sure, you know, if this is approved today, that all council members are aware of the date and time of the honorary street naming.
Further comments? Roll call on passage, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Roll call on emergency.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 105 is a motion from the Vice Mayor that the $250,000 in capital account is reallocated to the Grow Avondale Businesses Initiative, a public-private partnership. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, you know, over the years, the Avondale Town Center has struggled. We now have some businesses there. However, some of them are having some difficulty as well. And so first of all, let me thank the Avondale Development Corporation, LISC, the Urban League, and Councilmember Johnson for meeting to discuss this issue and to see what can be done. And so what came of that meeting is that LISC and the Urban League interviewed all of the business owners in the Avondale Town Center to see what they needed. And then Taryn Kennebrew from LISC devised a plan that I think is a really good one, and it's to have three different funds, the business expansion and growth, the new business readiness accelerator, and wraparound technical assistance. And this will be for businesses currently in the town center as well as businesses interested in coming to the town center. It also can help some businesses in the surrounding Avondale area. And so, you know, the support, I think, would be great. These businesses need it. We want to see them thrive. The private part of this is that there are other institutions that are interested in investing because they have an interest in these businesses doing well. And so we asked the city for the $250,000 for this fund that will help all of the businesses in the town center as well as surrounding businesses, and just to help Avondale continue to grow and thrive.
Further comments? Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Yeah, thanks, Vice Mayor. I think this is great. I think this is great that the money stays in the Avondale and stays with the project. I had the opportunity to talk to LISC and the Urban League, and I think this is going to be a great use of the money.
Further comments? Roll call on adoption of the motion, please.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 106 is a motion from Councilmembers Jeffries and Nolan that a subcommittee of equitable growth in housing, referred to as the Community Investment Subcommittee, be formed with the purpose of prioritizing and coordinating council's strategic investment in underserved neighborhoods chaired by Councilmember Nolan. Mr. Jeffries, we are now in equitable growth in housing.
Yeah, I'll set it up and then give it to my colleague, Mr. Nolan. So this, this subcommittee, the intention of it is to help guide a lot of the investments this council has made. For example, in Bond Hill, we just invested $7 million, and we've made significant investments in the West End. And so the purpose of this subcommittee is to pull together all the stakeholders and get input and guide those investments. So I will turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Nolan, who will be chairing the subcommittee.
Mr. Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Jeffries, for your support on this. We on council talk a lot about prioritizing our economic development investment dollars in neighborhoods and parts of our community that haven't traditionally seen the same level of investment. And we have backed that up with allocations of resources to do just that. And the hope is that with this subcommittee, we can convene all of the stakeholders in a particular area and bring everyone to the table for an opportunity to discuss and share ideas, give, be proactive about engaging the community in the conversations, and really give everybody an idea of what a path forward for development looks like. We talked about this yesterday at length, so I'll save us the rest, but happy to answer any questions.
Further comments?
Mr. President? Yeah, so I just want to thank Councilmember Nolan for this idea. I just, you know, yesterday, he gave us a whole list of all the folks from Bond Hill, for example, that he's met with and talked to, just bringing a lot of different entities together so that this is something that the community and all stakeholders can actually work on together. Bond Hill is just, just the first step, their plans to do this all across the city. And so, you know, thank you for your leadership in this.
Mr. Kramer-Ding.
Yeah, this is great. Thanks to Councilmember Nolan and Councilmember Jeffries. This is another step forward, and this is great community engagement. We've got connected communities with zoning reform. We, as a council, can continue to keep in mind that in a lot of neighborhoods where there's not a TIF district, we just do not have the funding necessary to make development happen. So that is a missing piece of the puzzle that we need to keep in mind and identify resources in the short term, I mean, in the next year, so we can meet our housing units and get development going in these neighborhoods. And I keep reminding everybody about, you know, Cincinnati Futures, there was a lot in that report, but a big part, to me, the headline was "The Money Necessary for Economic Development," and we just need to keep returning to that because that is necessary to make the development happen and the housing necessary that we need as a city.
Further comments? Ms. Owens.
Yeah, thank you to both Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Nolan. This is very intentional, granular work that I think ultimately means that that front-end conversation and communication and convening people, I think, will lead to more productive results as we think about neighborhood development. So very appreciative of this work.
Further comments? Roll call on adoption of the motion. Item 106.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding? Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Item 107. First reading?
Ordinance.
Yes, first reading, please.
Ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Cincinnati to rezone certain real property located at 1813 Race Street and over the Ryan Neighborhood for the PR Public and Recreation, Park and Recreation Zone District, Commercial Community Pedestrian Transportation Corridor Zoning District to facilitate the construction of an office building.
Roll call on suspension.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yes, this is a zoning change. It is at Findlay Market, 1813 Race Street, to allow the Findlay Market Corporation to build out an office building. I think we all had a great discussion, good engagement, and recognition of the unique role that Findlay Market really plays in our city and making sure that it continues to thrive.
Thank you. Further comments? Roll call on passage.
Councilmember Kramer-Ding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Nolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Albee?
Yes.
That concludes the business portion of our agenda. After a very successful last weekend, where, as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we had the Bengals practice in front of a large crowd, we are jam-packed with events again this weekend. On Saturday, we have the Queen City Slam at the Banks from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have Red Bull Flugtag coming back to the city. Classic Billy, beginning at noon at Sawyer Point. And for those of you unfamiliar, Flugtag is a free event where Red Bull builds a massive platform, several stories in the air. People from all around the country participate by building their own homemade gliders, and then these crazy people jump off of the platform to see who can go further down the river. Sneaker Ball, put on by Bigger Than Sneakers, will be at TQL Stadium Saturday evening. I will be attending all three events, and I encourage everyone in Cincinnati to come to our Urban Core and celebrate this weekend and celebrate our beautiful city. City Manager Long, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, I'm wearing a beautiful hat. I don't know if you think it's beautiful, I think it's beautiful. But this hat is, is being sold by our amazing Cincinnati firefighters with a new charitable initiative that addresses financial concerns for firefighters that may have been injured in the line of duty, and it also assists their families while firefighters may be recovering. So see your local firefighters if you want to buy one of these hats. I think it looks pretty good. I don't know about on me, but it's a good-looking hat. It fits well. But this is amazing charitable contribution to our amazing firefighters. I think I may be the first in Chambers to purchase one, so follow my lead, get to a firehouse, and help our amazing fire department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think it is a beautiful hat, and it's a beautiful initiative for our well-deserving firefighters. Thank you. Further comments or announcements? I see Ms. Albee.